Go ahead.
Follow up Smithfield School Committee meeting of April 18, 2023. Order.
Chairman Martin.
President.
Mrs. Mayo, here. Mr. Cornell.
Here.
Mrs. Bottom, here. Mrs. Sparkle, here.
Five presidents don't answer to their forums or the flag.
Flag allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to open it up to public comments, union comments. Councilman O'Hara, if you'd like to speak.
First of all, I apologize for diction, it's not quite as it should be, but I'm going for my monster, so bear with me. Today, I stand before the United Commonwealth Women, but as a mother whose children went through the system, and as a grandmother whose grandchildren are in the system, and as retired teacher where I had the pleasure of teaching Mrs. Bottom old sister and son, Mrs. Bottom spelling bee queen that she should have been every year, she helped her little kids get the next one, and Miss Lombardi whose wife got me at so many of her fundraisers for the needy and to herself active from the day they moved into this town, Mr. Cornell, I had the pleasure of having your daughter and of course our Michael, again, that I'll always call our own. This community has gone through a lot this last year. It's been a challenge for everyone. But as an educator, and I've seen what sacrifices in the attitude of the teachers, even with kids, and let me tell you, not everyone has perfect children, that no matter what type of trouble they get into, they'll come back and say, I have to tend you, but she likes you. And the effort they put into it. Your administrators at the middle school, where I have most contact in the high school, have been done beyond. They looked at the well-being of the child first and foremost. Academics are important, but without a security, a well-being, that they will never achieve what they could achieve. As I drop them off, I see aides, et cetera, or as I drop them, I put it on the school, they're there and they cooperate. As I listen to other school systems and see what they're going through academically, I look upon this community. And that goes with I want to do aides, the janitorial people, administration. It's been so, how can I say, it helped heavy odds for many of us. That the security my children have known, my grand-grandchildren are not experiencing. It is because of you all that things are getting better, and I know they will still get even better. Needless to say, you will have my support today, tomorrow, as long as I know when. And I shouldn't joke about this, but you know me, I have to. When I first met the administrator, we had this thing, I want to like him. And today, I could honestly say, sure, I respect you. And I think that's something that he's learned. And as I look at these parents and the support I always got. And this young lady, who was going to the office, and she probably wanted to say the whole, but she was always very cordial along the way, this community is settled. And we must fight for the fight that is from our state. And I know they're going up for one as far as, I want for all, and give me the date and I'll be at the state house, or anything else, because we're a small community, we often don't get the funds we deserve. That's law. So we have to get some oldies but goodies out there and say, bring it on because we got our own rules. And they seem to think North Smithfield is that wealthy community. North Smithfield is basically a middle-class community. And people don't realize, and people work hard. And with the insecurities that exist today financially, as far in the health field and in our politics, it's scary. I am just a little person on a town council that will always support education. Education is the pathway to the future, whether it be going to trade school, which we have to build a lot of those and a lot better state, I hope someone hears me, because you don't have to be an engineer, you don't have to be a doctor, it takes all types to run a country, but we have to work together. I think teachers was my heart, because let me tell you, if I only have two to handle and they get them all they want, they're gonna be awarded crowns in another life, always because they well-deserve it. I know you have complaints, and I will support the people that come up to speak about them, but the day they make it a personal attack and any single one of you, I will be there. You attack the policy, not the person, thank you. Now, the second one would be a time. Right now, and I do not know who puts the prices on bottled water and drinks, because when you see what you pay for a case, and this is what I call price gouging. I don't know if we have private people for that one system.
We do, and one of the things I'll say is I don't think there's been a price increase in five, six, seven, eight years.
Not the hot lunch, but the drinks you buy and the snacks you buy.
Or the machines, the vending machines.
That is, are they, do we own those machines?
No.
Then I would like you to take down, and if you're too busy, I will volunteer my time. About price, I have boys that it's hard to get a key. And they may want a bottle of water, they may want one of the juice drinks, $2.25 to $50, figure what a case worth. We're here to provide for needs, I don't think on food we should make a profit. And I'd say, they're busy, I will come and help you with a smile and a lemon on the lip. So I have a concern for that. And P, you and I, I don't think chips should be a snack vendor. A bag of chips, the ones you get like two and a quarter, give me a break. We're gonna have snacks, healthy snacks, maybe fruit and veggie chips, they do have them. But I can't say drinks, yes, but the selection of junk, let's monitor. It's hot enough at home, but when they can sneak away and get into this stuff, maybe to buy lunch shaped by junk, maybe it was help, they end up getting a hot lunch, who knows? That's the thing that concerns me, we ran out of water, $2 for water, or they charge you those little shots of water, I like to call them, there's not much there, what a dollar, a gallon of water, that's robbery. I hope I said nicely, I will help them with their pricing, and we can judge what they make, you know, have to make some money, but this is the problem. And kids often not get money to get the junk. And that concerns me also. Less junk, more healthy food, and more reasonable prices. I thank you for your time, as I look at people here, we are lucky to have every single one of you, I thank you for your time, and I pray that we're guided to do the best for our students and the best for one another. Together, we will forge forward, but the day things get personal, it becomes a personal attack with wounds, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Does anyone else want to say anything? Do you have any?
Nope, I do not. Okay.
Not a reading speaker, so excuse me. Anyone that knows me know I shake and falls through. My name is Nancy Dowey. I want to show this page of home. First and second grade at the brick building. Doctor 35, it's number 10, drug on the block across the street. I thought, Mrs. Claire and I both thought it would be an issue to do with the bridge of suicide situation. I'm not sure that it doesn't reflect indication that down to whatever you know, Smithfield. If that's the case, then I could move Wendy Ironman here, the Holocaust, or does she still do the Holocaust? In the curriculum, she had a book for, sorry, the Holocaust and that stuff, is that still open?
Oh, those courses still on.
Okay, so I don't understand if that's still altered, how this could not be. I'm trying to wonder the way through the book. And like I said, Mrs. Mayo, it makes me think of growing up with my cousins. Not the suicide part, because that's not all the book is about. It's about family living back then, and girls that were brought up in what became a very, what was very weird, but very strict, like, I'm sure kids today can't even relate to how we grew up, they can't, they don't even know what it's like to play outside. My concerns are that we're a small community, we don't tap in, but I don't believe we've always been small, right? That's what I'm afraid it's taking. And the fact that it was just shut down, the fact that it was obviously not reviewed, is there the department, if they may have department?
I don't know if I'm answering questions during this, or we're just.
I'm sorry?
It's, I don't need you to speak.
Well, my question goes to Savoli Camaro, and then you shutting it down. Obviously, Claire was supposed to finish, if I superintendent left her off. Sorry, I know all these people, so I forget their lessons. I don't know who the English department is, is not, I would have thought this whole curriculum or whatever was passed through her, him, for me, and then through the curriculum director, and I just, I don't understand the fact that it was just shut down. I understand, I also know of a couple of students that did have issues with it, and there will always be students that have issues with different things, and to my knowledge, they went to guidance, they were given a different book, more than to read and probably deal with it, which works. Life is life, there's a reality out there. And I don't want to see it too much. I really don't, I don't want us stop reading. I know a Republican town, I know more than the only Democrats in it, but we've never been that strong. And I just, I don't know what's going on with Jessica, I know Pam Savoli is a phenomenal teacher because I subbed for her numerous times. She's on the kids, she demands her attention, she demands, like, my, Mrs. Sun had a choice with her class or somebody else, and I told him, I said, don't take it, he plays hockey and baseball, and I said, Katie, you can't find a club class, you know, like an electric easy class, but she demands you do your work, it's not going to be easy because I subbed for her, and he has, you know, kind of issues with her family processing. And I just know her work is, is hard, and kids take those classes for a reason, because they are hard and they're supposed to be hard, and they're supposed to experience things that are not within their normal experience. And we've had suicides in the South, in this department, in this, like, yeah, it wasn't even how many years ago, somebody hung themselves on the tennis court, so we can't, it's life. And thank you for listening to me, and I guess I just hope Pam can test a little bit.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, let's move on to the consent agenda. Does anybody want to pull anything off of the consent? I do want to just point out Eagle Scout, congratulations, Joshua Hanlon, I'm always happy when there's a new Eagle Scout and the opportunity to send them a letter from I know growing up, you know, many of the Eagle Scouts went on to be very successful, and I'm sure it has to do with them being Eagle Scouts. It's a journey, it's about community, it's about accomplishing things, and I just wanted to say, you know, I'm very proud of this young man, Joshua Han. Any.
One item, on the quote for the furniture from the library at the middle school.
16.
Can we just pull that out of the consent agenda and then discuss it?
Sure. Hearing none, I just want to say on the bid award to DADCO, I just think, I just want to say that I think our administrative staff did a really good job and was very creative in coming up with a, you know, something that I think is going to be good for us, is creative in the way it's being handled, working with other districts, and I think from a managerial perspective compared to what a lot of other districts are doing, it's, it's certainly competitive, and I don't, I just think it's a lot of good work by our administrative staff and the other districts to, it's a nice sign of collaboration. Thank you. Good job. All right, moving on, I'll unkind a motion to pass consent agenda, items one through 18, plus item 16. Motion to adjourn. All in favor? I. All opposed, the ayes have it, item number 16.
I just have a question, installation, is that putting the table together or what are?
Yeah, often the furniture comes modular, so somebody has to assemble it.
Okay, I was just wondering what we were installing, but then it was the legs and they have to put the top on.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'm in a motion to approve item number 16. Motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor? I. All opposed, the ayes have it. Superintendent.
I just want to quickly address a couple of concerns regarding community access to the athletic field and the track. The gates have been open, we've heard many complaints that the gates are not open, but they have. What, what I think was the confusion is that if you park in the parking lot and you're walking towards the athletic field and you have the basketball court on the left and the concession stand on your right, there's a large double gate, which is a vehicle gate, that over the winter and for a while had been locked because we actually don't want people driving vehicles onto the track or doing, finding donuts in the middle of the field, that was locked. It was a gate to the left and a gate over to the right. And either some people didn't see those gates and they were always unlocked, unlocked 24/7, they've never been locked. They either didn't see them and thought that the field is not accessible, or, and I have to say, I've had some people complain saying that they want to walk the track, but they don't want to walk over to where the gate is in order to get to the track. So to settle this up, we opened the double gates, right, so all the gates are unlocked, the gates to the parking lot are never closed. The double gate is open, the side gates are open. Now, we are going to look to put an individual gate someplace next to the double vehicle gate. That wasn't put in before, we will put this in again. So what we want to know, what would I like people to know is that the field has been open, right, and has been accessible. Now, one of the things that we also run into difficulties with is the timing, when is the field accessible to residents? So one of the things that we have to hold on is that we cannot have people out walking the track during school hours when we have E classes out there, for example. And the same goes for after school, where we have practices out on the field and the track, and then when we have games or matches out on the field of the track. So essentially, if they're a student, if it's during the school day, or there are practices, games, and matches, or school events out on the field, we just can't have anybody, any, from anywhere, just walking around the track. Now, that doesn't hold true for when the field is rented, right? So we have a management company and they've been incredibly accommodating with trying to find places for the town leagues, time and the schedule, also to generate some revenue by renting to private teams. Residents can walk the track at those times, right, there will be rules posted and just the understanding that you're walking the track while an adult league is playing a football game, you may get hit in the head with a football. So it's, it's, we do have signage that will be going up in a couple of weeks that will point out where the gates are, point and highlight what the, what the expectations and the rules are. But yes, we do want the public to, or I should say, the residents to be able to access the track to walk, it's a beautiful facility. But just keep in mind that during the fall, during the, especially the spring season, part of the winter, mostly fall and spring, that's used, you know, all day long and all evening long and pretty much all day Saturday. So, so really, the times available for people to use the track, and again, we'll, we'll post that, is before 7:30 in the morning, that's when our students are arriving and we have cars coming in and all that, so from dawn to 7:30, all right, and anytime the track isn't being used in the field by our students. To help facilitate this, we are working on getting that schedule online, so people can take a look and see that, oh, this Saturday, there's a football, you know, there's a game to go or a match against so-and-so, all right, that's not the time to walk the track, right? But you look at it and you see the opening, and there may be North Smithfield Youth Soccer Week. It's a town week, you can walk the track at that time, again, you may be hit in the head with a soccer ball, right, but you can still walk the track. So we'll, we'll get these out there, and I'm just hoping that somehow we can just get over these misconceptions that everything is locked, we don't want people there, we do want the town to be able to use this.
Thank you, Superintendent, and just, I text you, I think it was Sunday, the bathrooms were open, track was open, kids playing, concessions still, so I hope that's how it's going to continue, and I know that's how it's been going.
Rolling, yeah.
So I don't, I understand there's a little miscommunication out there, but I don't, I don't see that it was shut down, residents are always welcome, you know, that, residents are always welcome when they can use it.
Right.
But that's always been our position, it hasn't changed, and hopefully won't change.
So. And I think getting some of the rules out there, because it's also unfortunate that our PE teachers will go out there with the students and there are people walking the track and they have to say, I'm sorry, you have to leave, and we'll get the, I'm a taxpayer, this is my right to walk the track, but not during the school day, you know, not, not while we have kids out there. There are just so many safety and security concerns throughout public education that we have to just mix, and we have to separate our students from people coming on the grounds that we don't know, don't recognize.
Thank you. Just one, Chair, permission? And if I'm going too far from the report, please feel free to say something, but I think we're talking about the field. I just want to ask if I could ask the status of the, I was still going for the hammer cage, I think that's not too far. We have, to be clear, we're talking about the athletic field.
I'll double check it with Alan, and I'll, I'll get a list of the, all these projects that we have coming up. Like most things, we're trying to get people in to do things, but it's, they don't have the necessary staff or things are back ordered, so all of these great plans that we have just keep getting pushed back because of staffing and parts and supplies, but I'll, there's a number of projects like this, the baseball fields, the throwing area, you know, I'll, I'll get you some definitive dates if I can, but yes, they're, they're still in the works.
And obviously, the throwing areas, the people that work on the track, anywhere in the field, I mean, courts, there's no harm from any of the throwers.
No, no.
Yeah.
Yes.
The maintenance of the field, that's on our staff here?
Yes, and Dave, we have, we purchased, along with the renovation of the field, the upgrades, the necessary maintenance equipment, our maintenance department has had the specialized training for it, and it is on a schedule where every month it's, there's grooming, and so, yes, there is a maintenance schedule along with the necessary equipment to manage and maintain.
Okay, thank you.
Question. Okay, moving on to item four, informational, anybody have any comments? Again, this is just informational.
I do. Yeah, I know, I know, I know you do, too. Mr. Canasis, been with us for 20 years, foundation of our music and band program, absolute gentleman, brilliant teacher, but has a fantastic opportunity, and he is ready for a change in his life, so it was with great regret that I talked to him, I tried to talk him out of it, right, I did refuse at one point to accept any kind of. Alright, I did refuse at one point to accept any kind of resignation, but this is a really a good opportunity and room for him. And, you know, he is, he will be missed. Yes. Absolutely.
Mr. Kay. All three of my daughters. Okay. When I told him that he was moving on, my middle child was like, what? Like, how is that even possible? I think, I think she would have been 50 and she would still have been. How is it even possible that he moved to Smithfield just because he has been a fixture here? He has touched thousands of children and changed their lives. And as much as I was really saddened to see him go, I wish him the best of luck. And I would not be surprised if one of those students that he had such an impression on come right back here. And we're going to be the better for it because because of the the passion and the commitment that he had to the music program to all the students. So thank you, Mr. Kay.
Any other? Great. Moving on to old business fiscal year 23. Fiscal year 24. So have there been any questions presented or anything?
Nothing at all.
Um. Sure.
So the state age is not in the part.
It is not that one.
No, I hope we finalize the schedule. I know that it's the budget in 24.
Either good or fantastic, or God forbid, awful. We don't know.
Okay, moving on to the contract regarding the parking lot extension unit.
So I have, I did reach out to you. You or I had a good conversation with their facilities director. Really didn't have much to offer because the solar canopy is not done. So it's still under construction. And the way it came about for them was a lot different than the way it was, you know, proposed to us. I did ask if he had or could share any kind of schematics or information or you know, RFP that we could at least look at and maybe use as a template. They did it sole source. They didn't go off a bit. So I do have a couple of calls to some districts in Massachusetts to get some information from them. But what what I would recommend, and this is after a conversation with Mr. Seaton, is that instead of us trying to hire an engineer, come up with the specifications for the actual installation, because it's so far beyond, you know, what we can come up with in-house. And to come up with that level from an engineering company would be very expensive. Rather, what we're recommending is that we put out a bid for a design bill. We let them provide the designs. We let them, you know, figure that out for us. And what we could do is there is basically was three options, three things that were were discussed or presented originally. It was the solar canopy, that's one thing. It was the re-creating, repaving of the existing parking area. And it was the 16 slot extension to the parking. We could put out an RFP for those three components. And they can bid the whole thing, they could bid part of it. And then we could hopefully see not just an apples to apples, but also apples to orange. So that we could prioritize in price and and just move forward from there with those those three items. So if redevelopment, if they who gave the original proposal comes in and says, okay, we're bidding on all of this. This is what it means to the town. Or other company comes in and says, look, you know, we can do the extension, we can repave it, we can do an extension. We can take a look at that part as well. So it also having this information in place helps us with the Department of Ed. If we would like to get reimbursements for construction. So again, I mean, one company presentation says, we'll do it all for free, but you know, there's a some tax things that they would be working out with the town. Others could come in for less money or less risk or you know, and could still possibly be eligible for a right reimbursement. So.
I have one question. Um. I received a survey at home the other day. And part of it was talking about state legislation, things like that. But one of the questions was that they are possibly looking at schools with solar on the buildings? Is that something at the RIDE level or? It was part of the survey question and I said to her, is this something the state is proposing? She said, well, that's why I'm asking the question. So I didn't know if somewhere there's talk that schools have solar to supply electric to the schools and so forth. So I just didn't know if it's something that's at the RIDE level or if it's through the state legislation.
I don't, do you want to forward me the the copy of the survey?
It was on the phone.
Oh, it was on the phone?
On the phone. And she even called me back because I couldn't finish the survey and she wanted to complete it because she wanted all these. So I don't know if it's something we want to reach out to at the state levels to ask. I can certainly, if there's a, I can tell.
So so they would be looking at routes. I mean, this wouldn't be
Well, I don't know if it's buildings or if they propose solar on the property that could provide service to the building. I don't know. But I was surprised there was that question and it was coming from the state of Rhode Island.
Interesting, okay. So I was hoping to have for you tonight a an estimate of what it would cost. We periodically use a company for the ride projects and they're they're on the list for wide school construction, a state MPA. What would it cost to just generate this design bill? So we can put it I unfortunately I don't have the pricing.
So Superintendent, I know that I was in Ashland, Mass. And there's a lot of schools in Mass when we drove back that I noticed that have the canopy. So, excuse me. I know that it was Tony Gertner reached out.
Right.
And they have like statewide. Yeah, they got, they had something like a statewide contract or you might recall something to that effect. So I'm wondering if they didn't bid it, or if we could piggyback off their bid, possibly. And I'm not saying this is the way to go. I'm just saying that that there's a lot of schools in Mass that have it and
Maybe that's part of your survey and it's a, you know, Rhode Island trying to catch up to Massachusetts as a
Much different than I expected. I didn't know it was that high of a ground. If that was one thing. And I guess that's, that's it. And solar on buildings is complicated.
Very.
It's, the roof has to be good. The weight has to be okay. What happens in 30 years when they're not good? And then you have to tie into the power grid and that might be a big cost that ends up going to the school department, not them to tie into the grid from the school. So there's a lot of issues with with solar on buildings. Any else? So Superintendent, you'll report back to us sometime in the future.
Would you like me to go ahead and get this RFP together and and put it out? Or would you like to see it in May? The base school.
I'm okay with you doing whatever you feel you can do.
Alright.
I mean, I think that
So we'll try to turn this thing around.
We think that expanding the parking lot is probably a good idea. Whether we can do it at a lower cost because of solar or something that I'm sure all this is doing. But, you know, if you're going to do it, I don't think the added solar is going to add more to the RFP, you know what I mean? So they're going to come back with something.
That's right. So and it will include, you know, necessary language for drainage and lighting and all of that. I'd like to see the three.
Yeah. Great. Anything else? Alright, moving on to the athletic uniforms. Mr. Tech, do you have any updates for us? Great.
I'm sorry, we suggested that taking a vote to give me to go ahead to hire the architect to come up with the RFP. If you feel that's necessary.
Do you have any estimate on cost?
I'm hoping it's below the $5,000 because then it gets complicated, right?
I think you keep it on, yeah, I'll make a motion that we authorize the superintendent to pursue the request for architectural design work in terms of online to discuss regarding the parking lot and possible solar.
Motion made as a second.
Second.
Second. All in. All in, Taylor?
Aye, all opposed, yes. Moving on to the athletic uniforms.
Good evening. I do have a few updates, but I wanted to briefly touch on a couple of things that I just mentioned before I got up here. As far as the throwing cages, that is the final part that we're looking for with the track. We do have our pole fully installed, operational, we've been using it. So in Javelin, we can continue to do that event as well, too, up until when we finally do get it one way or two. We can throw the Javelin if we have that. So at this point right now, we are down to just a shot put. This is a gamble. But with the three elements, pieces that were missing before, we will be able to host full meets here in North Smithfield. We were graciously able to use Smithfield High School for the program events, the last two track meets we just recently hosted. And then we'll be available to start hosting class meets and individual championships, which will have to stay in some more, get some more money to the concession stands and things like that. So we are, we are close. And in discussion with Alan, we did have a company come already to a measurement of where the cage should be installed with the vector lines. So for proper distancing and safety considerations on that. So we know.
I believe we're targeting summer for this because we can't do it during
Yes.
the actual season.
Yeah, so with just to keep an eye here, it is moving along and it's still in the process right now. So we are getting close to finish line on that one. So that's a really good thing. Secondary to the parking lot extension, I will jump on board and say that it's absolutely sensitive at this point. As the athletic director, I feel a lot of phone calls. We host a lot of larger events here. Including the fact that I sent back a call to the superintendent to let him know that our parking lot's overflowed. Even though we know we have ample parking below and we have store lots basically here at the middle school, high school. We do have a lot of our guests taking upon themselves to park on the side of the road, all the way up down that road. We include buses from some schools that go on that side as well, too. So it becomes very hard to see coming out of the complex that buses park along that way. Also coming in and turning, you can't quite see the entrance as you're, that bus is there. So you know, it has reached a level where, as I said before, success predicates many people attending many more games. While we haven't hosted these track meets, you're starting to have anywhere from three, four, five high schools arriving. And you're talking about 150, 200 kids on the track and a couple of set of parents. And all of a sudden, you have 50 or 60 parking spots up there that are not going to cover remotely anywhere near you. So from a safety perspective, I think it's a great that you have to extend upon down there. And even though I know from a liability standpoint that even though these people are parking on the side of the road and that's technically not the school department's responsibility, I just think being quick moral citizens that we are, something we have to consider. That that in the forefront of that, even though we have a parking lot, if we don't want anything happen, we have it happen in the past. I try to avoid that at all, so.
Can I? We're making signs. Can we make some sort of signs, additional parking at the middle school?
I'm glad to say that. That was part of my reason bringing this up was to join in. I also want to put a sign up there that says buses must park. Getting the buses before the middle school down below and we can call you or the team can call you when your game is done because what happens is they load on the road. So they put their signs out on the road. And so if we were to allow or mandate parking goes below with signage up there, when the bus drivers are held accountable to follow with signage up there. And then we can allow the parking lot to empty out and then pull the bus right in. Kids can load inside the parking lot and then make the bus pull back out and then we have a couple of issues there.
Great.
So the uniforms, currently I do have a couple of different things to bring up to your attention. One is I do have a set of white game pants and white shorts that dry clean right now. So I will be presenting that in the next meeting with an actual wash so we can see if anything comes out of it, changes or can help revitalize any of it. I will have that. One of the things that I did speak with one vendor about, when the vendor primarily used to go with Speedline is you know, reasons I mentioned before for longevity and those things like that, but we obviously know cost is a factor. And that's something that I'm very consciously aware of. And I know that the committee is very aware of that as well, too. Reason we obviously stayed with that company primarily was that company also, as I've mentioned many times, can manufacture over and over again. I have been looking at, the vendor has mentioned that there is a secondary company called Pro Look who offers the same type of service or setting sets. You can customize uniforms through them and they will continue to manufacture them. And right now, I'm trying to base it on a access to say if they're a lesser price for them. So for teens, same service, which I want to articulate on. So, you know, one of those things where I won't be able to project the quality along those uniforms, but one of the things I would look at is that you see there's a laundry list of numerous amount of teams that we are ordering from. So what I would like to do is even whatever approvals I do get or not get, sense of how far you want to go forward, I would like to definitely order a pro look set of uniforms for one or two of our couple of teams, especially maybe at the middle school. And we're starting to launch the middle school. And now we have maybe another avenue with another company with the ability to see if that's going to go forward because then we would be lining up to the exact same extent behind us and maybe have the ability to have a little more competitive pricing with that. So that's something to consider. Doing it, like I met with the company, Rogan Marciano, primarily one of our major vendors here, carries both Pro Look and the SD line. So we still have to stay with our vendor that we use. And so we have to say that we're following service that we have over the years. And they have the ability to use both of those. So that's something I wanted to follow this one to.
Yeah, most.
So you got my email?
I did.
Not meaning to step on toast. I just wanted to see where else, Speedline, what other vendors. Shopping lead, my phone rang as I was driving here with a vendor. And I thought, well, I can't go through too much with you, but just that I was looking. Apparently this other person does supply to private school in Rhode Island. I just kind of threw a number out and I said, how much for basketball you for? He said, we're talking about 130. And then I throw in the practice uniforms. So I just didn't know how many other vendors in the area because as someone who's in business, I know that vendors, especially those on the state's list, get very comfortable knowing they're going to get the call in your FPU. That was my concern.
Well, then, you know, take it out of consideration as well, too. There is often a lot of time vendors, as you mentioned, will use incentives to try to get you to order from them. So just like you mentioned, when we were ordering the basketball uniforms we ordered this year for the boys to go through Speedline, we ordered, you know, 22 sets and it was 111. And it was like, well, if you order three more sets, we'll throw in shooting shirts for every single one of the teams. And you're like, well, sure, but that's an extra 1,000 I don't think now for you. So, you know, at the same time, I don't throw all the extra things in, but you saw the bottom line on that. What I did, as I told you before, there are regional sellers for some of the Speedline and that particular vendor I know is What I did, as I told you before, there are regional sellers for some of Speedline and that particular vendor, I know is up a little more northern into Massachusetts. And they did make a mention of this to our Speedline representative down here and that I said, you know, one of the I'm very interested in is making sure that our prices are accurate, that our prices are competitive. And I said, so if I was to acquire some Speedline prices from vendors, maybe a little bit out of our region, so as seen from here, would you beat that price? And I was assured by the vendor that if we receive quotes on that, if you can speed line, he will beat the price. So it was, I did give you an idea, I did take that as a consideration. That is something obviously, especially if you look at the volume that we're talking about and looking at.
Right, I mean, it's a big number.
A hundred percent, a hundred percent, I'm very aware of that as well too. So those are currently where they're at the extent. Again, I don't know what the private committee is and timing is going to be of essence here. My concern has always been is that, you know, Lisa holds me to that point, that June thirtieth, it's June thirtieth. We've got everything built for it and June thirtieth, she's definitely someone I want to stay on the good side of. So I want to mention that once again, that June thirtieth is June thirtieth. Again, I know that we're not talking about ordering the whole list, but whatever we do, we are slowly running out of time here that we're now approaching the end of April. And uniforms can take anywhere on a good turnaround time, sixty-eight weeks. So we're starting to approach that point of no return, if that's something we're considering within this six year.
So I think that, you know, we're going to need some help from, I hope NSA, I hope the town, but we're not there. You know, I know that with the last, I mean, we authorized you to buy something last time.
Yeah, football, we had a couple of meetings going, football match, sporting event, that will be in on time.
But we're looking at possibly putting, you know, forty to fifty thousand dollars up, right? Now, if we were to, you know, go fifteen, 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 that would be something that I could support. I can't, I don't believe I could support right now forty-five. And I understand that, still support that.
What I want to do is I want to kind of maybe jump on and articulate what I heard earlier, what you were saying too. Maybe one of the things that considerations maybe they want to do is also thinking about, maybe we can't do that and you don't want to know that whole number. But is there any number you're comfortable with right now? Or is there one more set I can get going on? Is there something that we're willing to say at this point? And I'm just, you know, not putting anyone on the spot for a second, I'm saying, I don't know, if school community feels comfortable saying, well, at least we're going to put in five thousand more. So I could get any one or two more sets, especially for those fall sports that are coming up in consideration. I get that, but the whole number is very, very large and I'm not asking for that. But I did, my big concern is that the clock is ticking and at some point, you might come back with a number and say, well, I have to wait till that point now because we won't be able to do it in time.
So that's all. You mind, I'm just asking a few questions. Lisa, is there, is there money that's set aside that we could spend? Ian, what does the committee want to do? That's something, whatever the committee do, want to authorize ten thousand, we want to authorize by. And or sit and wait and see if other people will come forward to help us with.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to put down what my thoughts are. I'd like to authorize something right now, I'm willing to go as high as ten thousand, but I could put the five thousand too, just to get started. I like what you said of fifteen, 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 and I know you're not holding for that number, which is the concept. I think we could do more with, I did just, I had a brief conversation about this before, but I was thinking a little more about it. That was just, you know, not just NSA, but you know, our students in the town. I think if we could push for fundraising events like Unconfessed, that's not going to pay for everything, but you know, there's a lot. We could do a lot more, a lot, the athletics could be a lot more present there. There are some stores I have in mind, or some, I suggest, private entities might be able to put some money forwards. I won't put names right now, but I know there's probes, a launch companies that offer programs that support to help student athletics and student, you know, these kind of things. And I'm not going to name specific stores, but I have them in mind and I'll speak to Mr. Tech about that. Because I don't think we need approvals to, I can certainly just reach out to the stores, just to be happy. And so that's, those are my thoughts again, I'm willing to go to make money now, five to ten thousand again, with the idea of the spring to fall sports in mind, to really pursue the idea of some sponsorships. And you can, I have some specific places in mind that I'd like to reach out to. And thirdly, with fundraising, just, I mean, look at what the people are doing, look what somebody else is doing, you know, they're selling talons, raffles. I know it's a little bit, it's a little bit here, a little bit there. When I was involved, just looking socket in the, with the stadium and it was like drips and droughts, it seemed like we're never getting anywhere. But it finally, stadium got refurbished with a lot of little fundraising. So you'd be surprised how much money you can make if you're persistent down there.
What you're mentioning there, if you would like, if the committee would like to, I could go back with that list and revamp that list with some Pro Look pricing to that as well too, which may drop down that bottom line as well. It'd be easier to target some of the teams that we need to bring in whole set of uniforms in versus the teams that we need to fill in. If the fill-ins are already speed lined, it'll be a little more difficult to get that matched in. But there are a few middle school teams especially coming up that we're talking about starting from scratch with them. And but be able to get in a whole set at a lesser price instead of the ability to fill it in the future. So that could be some considerations that I could present that next month, it's going to be revised as well too, if that's provided with committee.
I think that would be good, but I also think because of the quality of Speedline, that the more rugged sports or the more physical sports stick with the Speedline. So maybe if we're going to try another vendor, if we go to the golf or the tennis, cheerleading, something like that. Because you may not need that rugged wear for those things.
Middle school cross country, lots of those, yeah, a hundred percent.
Be careful there, you know, competitive cheerleading is pretty rough out there. I might want to be doing it.
I know, and you're more, I'm just more to the players because we've really grown from what it was when my kids were at school.
I got to the tennis ball last night, tennis can be tough too, you know?
You're not rolling around on the ball.
Hey, you know, honey.
I'm not a tennis player, I wish I was. But if we could try and break those out, speed that could help with the bottom, you know?
Absolutely.
The list that you gave us the last one, the list that you gave us the last one, is that in ascending order of what is going to be?
So the way I, the hierarchy was, if I was to start, yeah, exactly, so number one was number one priority. And I went right in that kind of order and that's why you see some middle school programs around there, they leave it like now and somewhere. We may have recently done it, so we're kind of adjusting it.
The first six things that you have on here are just under fourteen thousand dollars, but four of six are middle school. So perhaps, you know, if you can see if you're too middle school, you're in one, with two companies, maybe that will help.
Correct, that's exactly where my intention was to go if that's.
Is that a motion? There is a second.
Does that make sense?
Wait, is there a second?
Second.
So Howard, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I'd like to add one question. I believe hockey, hockey, football, that equipment has to be more expensive than my life.
From an equipment standpoint, yes.
Okay. One of the ones you asked, that they.
Yeah, so football, we just recently addressed a couple of months ago, we're ordering a new set of uniforms. So that, the hockey uniforms, those have any more recent, because we could have an upgrade in those from, for instance, the uniforms we had before in the past. But hockey will again be decided upon, if we have a couple of other scenarios regarding a co-op that are in motion right now, which might change the need for uniforms for hockey right now.
So from last, from the fourth time, the second, how many?
Hockey right now is roughly, well, we did a filling, so it's be mine, you gotta have that kind of ability. So we did, half of the uniforms were done in two thousand and thirteen or two thousand and fourteen, was when we had the new set added in again. So again, that's why I was trying to show you last, I mean, the last committee, those uniforms can go anywhere from twenty to twenty-five years. It depends on how we maintain them. So the hockey uniforms are reverberating condition, think that replaced the whole hockey issue, the game socks, game socks get the holes in the rest of them also. Yeah, and so again, like I said, given the fact that it may be a change in hockey going forward at some point, we may not be in need of purchasing new hockey uniforms.
Second, in basketball, what is required if they get new uniforms every four years?
No, there's no, there's no particular requirement on how often you get uniforms. It's just that when we go ahead and order uniforms in the district, we try to make sure that the boys and girls teams get it at the exact same time. So we're doing boys' basketball, we want a girl's basketball same time.
That after the, after all the uniforms, but you have to be nice, they have to be working right.
This is part of what the overall bigger conversation you're seeing right now is trying to revamp the entire uniform inventory. So that we don't fall into that situation like you mentioned, but again, given budgetary constraints, sometimes we have years where we had to go a little leaner of what we could order. And with thirty-two sports teams, it's very difficult to maintain a four-year rotation on it. Just, it's just what we have facing our small community with large box sports teams.
You know, I have grandchildren, it's history in the shop, that girls did not get the uniform as friendly, friendly as it is. My daughter-in-law was played here. Let me tell you, some of the stuff they wore was pretty bad.
We specifically addressed that, that this committee did not, would not accept that. Mr. Tech, we talked about it publicly and everything else, that's not something that this committee tolerates.
And that's exactly why you saw this year, we ordered eleven, eleven, it was exactly the same.
True.
So if we go forward with what I suggested, you have to come back to what you made, that gives you time to be more.
So what I'm going to do is I'm going to, then if you give me a certain number or a certain number we want up to that list, tomorrow I'll pick up the phone and start calling for prices on Pro Look and things like that. And get that, whatever prices to match within that number that you're organizing right now. My gut instinct tells me that we're going to get this sooner or later and I'm worried if they're coming. What I could do is present in May, the new revised list, if whatever cost statements were happening at that point, if needed to. But I'm just concerned that if I don't, I wait till May's committee meeting, I don't think it'll happen in time.
So I think we're authorized in fourteen thousand. That's, that's.
That's something.
And then you figure out the best way to do it.
Is that dollar amount comfortable for you? Can you just reflect in the vote that it's your order?
It would be from Robyn Marciano.
Well, he's going to manage that.
Yeah.
Oh.
But it's from Robyn Marciano, either way.
Either way, Robyn Marciano serves both of those performance companies.
Okay, so you can add to the motion. You made the motion to authorize fourteen thousand dollars for uniforms. We'll add on, the vendor will be Robyn Marciano. But you will check out other vendors, et cetera. Ian, you need to buy, you're going to have the management of what uniforms to get. So whoever the vendor is, try them out, whatever else.
And I'll present a report back to the committee next time, where we stand.
Questions and concerns? Great, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Guys have it.
Thank you very much.
Any further business? During that, I'll maintain the motion to adjourn. Motion made in second. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Guys have it, or adjourned?